I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a very exciting one, so we want to get started right away. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Terry Pavisic?
Here.
Mike Davenport?
Here.
Sherrell Fuller?
Here.
Dan Nicholas?
Here.
Don Renner?
Here.
Eleanor Flynn?
Here.
And Kirk Kaufman?
Here.
Thank you. All right. And if we could start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We'd like to start with the student perspectives. And I don't know, who would like to go first?
Oh, go. So recently, our band was in London, and that was a very exciting thing. When I was, I think I was in fifth grade, I was living in London, and the band, that was the year that the band was there before. And I remember my mom, we were home for the holidays, but my mom was like, "We just came home, but you're, the high school you go to when you're older, like, is in London performing." And it was just a cool thing, because they were like, "That's where you'll go." So it was just a cool thing that they got that experience. And I think it's, as someone doesn't, I didn't get to go on the trip, because I'm not in band, but I just think it's really cool that they got to experience such like a universal discipline, like music, from like a different cultural perspective. And a lot of the kids who I've talked to who've gone on the trip said that, like, the history of music in the country is just so rich, because, I mean, their history goes back a lot further than ours. So it was just a really cool experience from that perspective. It's the second year of finals being before break for us, and I think this has been a positive change overall, from what I've heard. Students like being able to go into the break without the stress of having to come back to finals, and I think the information's fresher in our minds before the two-week break. So I think overall, that's been a good thing. And lastly, students are signing up for their 2019-2020 school year classes soon. And I've always had a good experience signing up with my counselor. Sometimes it's been a bit rushed, but I think that will change this year, especially as at North, because they've added a new counselor. So I think that will allow for more one-on-one time with the counselor-student to work through the scheduling. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And from South, well, we experienced the same thing with the finals before break. And I heard, I mean, it tends to work out. I mean, a lot of people did appreciate, you know, having the finals over before break. I heard some commentary that some people thought that it sort of diminished the holiday when they're studying for finals, because they're spending time, you know, cramming for finals, instead of enjoying the holiday break. But overall, I feel like it wasn't too much of a disruption. People, you know, sort of just went with it, and for the second year, it generally went with the flow like that. On top of that, I was recently at my SALT meeting this morning, and we're getting things ready for DGS's philanthropy this year, Erica's Lighthouse. And we're trying to do a lot more to see how we can incorporate the ideas of mental health awareness into our Mustang Way lessons, and into putting together our philanthropy assembly every year, and how we're going to be promoting our philanthropy this year. On top of that, starting the day we got back from break, we recently noticed the model classroom now has new walls and furniture, which is very exciting. We finally have been anxiously waiting that. In our, my English classroom, we have the whiteboard wall and the whiteboard surfaces on all the cabinets, on top of the tiered seating, like lecture hall-type seating, where the back seats are taller, and they sort of go down towards the front. So after this, if you have any, I have, I do have pictures I took of the room, so if you want to see what it looks like. People seem to be really enjoying the whole experience. People do like the new furniture and the new chairs, and I envy the whiteboard wall in all my other classes. I wish all of the walls were whiteboard surfaces, so it's been nice.
That's pretty cool. Well, I just wanted to say at North, I saw the TV coverage of the band in there. So I thought that was really neat to see that on TV. And it was a really good thing, so.
My daughter had a similar response to the entire, she's got a class this semester that's in one of the prototype rooms. And the whole wall being a whiteboard was just that, that was like, "Cool." She was just really excited about that.
Well, it gives them a lot of flexibility. They can do a lot of fun things with it, so, so great. And I do want to see those pictures, so. All right. All right. Well, moving right along, let's get this show on the road. Right? Dr. Thiele will be here a little bit late, so I think we'll go ahead and start without him, if that's okay. Because we're all anticipating the big show.
All right. Thanks so much for coming and having us here tonight. We just wanted to kind of go through where we are in the process so far. Some of the slides that you're seeing tonight are just going to be a recap of what you've probably already been introduced to, but we just don't want you to forget that we haven't forgotten about pieces and parts of the project. The common themes are something that we've been carrying along for the entire project and through the referendum itself. Safety and security, accessibility, learning commons, creating parity across the campuses, knowing that the schools are different in nature, but creating the same types of experiences for both North and South. And then air conditioning as well. At North, we're looking at a new gym and expanded cafeteria. Over at South, we have a new auditorium and then outdoor PE space. We've gone along this project and kind of created what we're calling these shared aspirations. And this list is actually the same list we've been, we've shared with you before in the past, except just recently, we added a new one. And the very last one on the list, recognizing environmental stewardship. So this is something that, at Whiten Company, sustainability is a big part of what we do on a daily basis. And we want to bring that forward and share that, and really emphasize it in these projects, and kind of identify what those key areas are, whether it be the building materials that we use, or different steps that we take in the design in order to be good stewards of our environment. So throughout the project, we'll kind of quantify that and share that with the board. We're going to start today off at South High School. So just to kind of get you oriented, this is an image of your existing floor plan, first floor plan. So off to the right, over here, is Dunham. Up towards the top, where you can't see, 63rd, Norfolk. So your existing main entrance is kind of over here, student entrance cafeteria. Then we go around cafeteria, auditorium, large gym, and fieldhouse. So when we look at the new overall first floor plan, we're, if you recall, we're switching the main entrance and student entrance. So your new main entrance, giving an identity to South, will be over off to the left. Working way back, there's administration suite renovation that opens up into the learning commons. The new auditorium sits 1,200 students, or seats, with a black box theater. Then we come around, we have your culinary arts suite. There's two classrooms off the culinary arts. And an arts addition on the first floor that will house four new art classrooms. And we'll dive into each one of these spaces a little bit more in detail. And then some renovation work that happens in the library as well. On the second floor, it's a second floor addition of classroom space, which includes some science labs and two additional classrooms up to northeast. And then the second floor of the auditorium. Off of the learning commons, which we'll go into in detail as well, are kind of some study lofts on both sides of the learning commons that overlook that large space. On the third floor, a couple more study lofts, as well as the auditorium. So we're going to dive into the administration wing, the offices, the front offices, kind of take a look at what is that. So as you enter into the building, the security vestibules, with your security entrance, and you go in through the main entrance, you check in at the main office. We have enough offices for 29 offices, along with kitchenettes, college and career, which is up here, which opens out into the commons. Again, not much has changed in these plans since you've last seen them. One thing I do want to bring to attention, that we did talk in detail with the school itself, was the health center, and how it relates not only to the front office, but how it relates, kind of connects back into the dean's area, as well as the commons. Now, we're going to take a deeper dive into the auditorium. So the auditorium, again, hasn't changed much, but the studio theater, we've kind of redefined the shaping of the exterior, as we've developed the exterior images, and really worked that into the student and event entry, and the scene shop, along with the theater classroom, which is a much-needed space over at South. Yes?
One quick question. As I've seen the music corridor hallway, has there been any talk about how wide that hallway is going to be?
We're limited with the existing structure and the new structure. How we're putting in the auditorium is going to actually stay the same width as it currently is. But you're going to get a lot of relief, because it's adjacent to the learning commons.
Okay.
And we do have some control from the, this corner on is all new construction, so we have more control on wide that corridor is for any access to the outside.
Okay. And then for access to the stage as well, yeah?
Also, there's a giant garage door right there for moving scenery, or equipment, or anything in from the outside, all the way into the scene shop. And then there's a large double doors on the other side of the scene shop and the stage. So you could almost literally drive a truck through there.
Yeah. So you can get direct access from the scene shop onto the stage?
The north-south corridor also is, helps with circulation, and we don't, we really don't have that right now either, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. One thing I need to point out is, the learning commons is kind of over in this area, and what we're looking at is kind of a remote cafe area over at South. So at North, we're touching the cafeteria and the serving area. So over here at South, to kind of create some of that same benefits, is looking at adding a cafeteria, or, sorry, a cafe into that, that feeds off that common space, now that there will be more students during the lunch period as well. On the second floor, we're just looking at the second floor seating. So the part, what they call the parter seating, which kind of rakes back as you enter into, from the first floor, you kind of rake back to the more additional seating. And then above, kind of costume storage and dimming room areas that service the production The third floor is really where you're going to access the auditorium seating for the balcony at South. So you'll have some kind of pre-function space, and then you can enter in and get to the seating at the balcony level on the third floor. Moving right along through the commons up into culinary arts. So we have had many conversations with the culinary arts teachers, and to figure out what the right layout was for their program, and we landed on an island approach of seating. So there's three bays, there's two classrooms. Each classroom has three bays of student islands that have two stations per bay. So there's six total stations with a teacher station up in front, over in this area. And there's movable tables that can move around into different configurations for testing purposes, or if they're in the lab area, which we've shared with the district, different layouts as well. And adjacent those two culinary arts labs is the demonstration kitchen, which opens up into the commons. Okay, so we're over here at the northeast corner. It's going to be the new addition over at South. And we're going to talk a little bit about the arts classrooms, but first, over in this corner of the building, is also where the second turf field is going to be over at South. So as we take a look at that, kind of backing up, your new addition down here, existing fieldhouse, 63rd Street and Dunham. So then we'll have the second turf field, kind of in this northeast corner of the property. Your existing monumental sign is right here, that stays.
Will there be lighting for that second turf field?
No, there is not any new lighting for that second turf field. It's actually going to be the same as North has currently at their second field.
Okay.
Is there the ability to put lights?
In the future, if you wanted to add them, you can always add them at both campuses. Okay. So diving back into the building, kind of walking through this art commons, you have your ceramic studio with a glazing area, some storage in the kiln room, with access to the outside. Then we have your 2D art studio suite, your digital lab, your jewelry 2D studio. And in jewelry, they might be teaching jewelry only a couple periods of the day. So there's certain pieces of equipment in jewelry that need to get locked up. So we've created an area in which the shop for jewelry can be closed up and locked up for safety and security.
Can we go back to the turf field just real quick? I just, it's the first time I've seen it, so.
No problem.
Is this going to be fenced, like North's second field?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And you have, it looks like there's a soccer field and a baseball diamond. Is that the intention?
Correct.
Softball.
It's softball.
It's a multi-use field, just like North's is, so that you can run all kinds of different things on it.
Just practice and gym, correct?
This is gym, although under-level softball sometimes plays on that field.
Okay.
But that's not turf.
It is turf.
It is turf.
It's turf. Oh, okay.
The softball field in the top corner, where it says existing softball field, that will remain grass.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Right.
And that doesn't infringe on left field of the existing softball field?
It does kind of cut off at a corner, but it's far enough deep that it's still playable.
Does it push the fence in a little bit?
A little bit.
In left field?
So more home runs in the left?
Green monster in the left field.
So right-handed batters are going to like the modifications, is that what you're saying?
Probably.
They're still going to have to hit it over.
They've still got to hit it well over 200 feet.
Okay.
That's farther than you think. I mean, it's going to be.
That doesn't change any conference regulations as far as length?
Oh, I should say.
Okay.
Regulate.
Yes.
Now, are those pathways? Are they like gravel, or are you expecting them to be actually like paved over with like, you know, like a cobblestone or like a concrete?
Yeah, we're looking at concrete, an actual sidewalk kind of material. We're still working through all that with our civil engineers for grading.
And we want the ADA accessibility to that field as well. And that's the avenue that they would take.
Yeah, there will be ADA accessibility to the field.
Doesn't look like it's an arc to me.
What's the question?
I was just pointing out that I think that actually the distance on that left-field line is actually pretty similar to what the distance is on the right-field line, if you're measuring to where they drew that arc. It's not a.
We saw the dimensions at some point. They're not up here, but we can get a diagram with the dimensions.
I mean, I think it's actually, it works out, I think it's actually pretty symmetric.
We were concerned with the same thing that you're, in our conversations, about the positioning and making sure that we have enough room for that left field, and also have the width for soccer on the turf field, and also have room between the turf field, the fence line on Dunham, and some trees before you hit the street. So, but it all played out. We were concerned at first, but there's enough room.
Enough room for the sign to?
Yes.
Yes.
That's on the north end, so that does not impose on anything. And remember, on north and south sides, we'll be having netting as well.
Good.
So when we get an electronic sign?
No comment.
I always have to throw that.
I know you do.
I was thinking we'd do something along the entire fence line.
Yeah.
You know?
Just a scrolling.
Yeah, there you go.
A mega.
That's right. Yeah. Are the trees you're showing all existing, or is some of that new planting?
No, we'll have to look at that and see what's new and what's existing.
More new than existing.
Correct.
There is new, though.
There is new.
So we're adding green. We are adding green.
Yes.
As Hank would always say, if we're removing a tree, we're putting a tree in.
Yeah.
So we're not losing any trees on either side of town.
No, that's the directive we've been given, so that's the directive we're going to follow.
We'll have to be.
We'll be tree-neutral or better, as a result of this project.
Any other questions? All right. So moving up to the second floor. The second floor, as I mentioned before, there's two science labs, and with adjacent classrooms on each side of the science labs. And those, we're working with the district for the layouts still on these labs, but the idea is that you can have some synergy between the science lab and the classroom for shared curriculum in the future, if so desired. Or you can close them off and have two separate spaces. So flexibility is kind of the key, yeah.
I see still in the plan, you have that like flippy wall door. And I've sort of tried to get some feedback on it, and I've not heard anything good about it. Like, people think it's going to take up a lot of space, and it's going to be uncomfortable. So I don't know, I just think in the future, if you're going to make another change to it, I think just having a regular old door.
There is a regular door.
Well, yeah, but I mean, there's a regular door, and then you have that weird wall. And I think if you just got rid of the weird wall, it might just even save some money, if not just get rid of something that's kind of, you know, would never be used, or is.
Well, Kirk, the goal there is to allow you to turn that classroom and the commons space on the second floor into a single classroom, if you needed to, to use the indoor and outdoor space, so that in a situation that you wanted to, you could really turn that top classroom and the whole kind of upper floor there into a single classroom, if you wanted to.
Is that supposed to like slide, or like?
It spins.
It spins.
Like the picture down at the bottom.
I was wondering if you like could push that thing all the way to the wall, and like open up the whole space? Or does that not do?
We can look at that. I mean, we're still working, some of these areas, we're still working on, developing. And we'll share with any refinements that we have with the board as they come along. So any images that you see, that's kind of a note for the entire presentation. If anything changes in these images, we will definitely bring it in front of the district and the board for approval before we move forward.
Kirk, is it the openness that is, that you've heard people give concerns of, or the style of the door?
I think it's just the style of it. Like, it's just like the way that it is shaped is kind of uncomfortable, I think.
There's more than one way that we could achieve. Like Dr. Thiele was saying, doors that fold, doors that just go up and down.
Yeah.
Like a garage door.
Yeah, like I like that, the garage door idea is actually kind of a good idea. It's kind of interesting, yeah.
So Hank, how much more advanced are these science labs going to be versus the other science labs in the building?
It's not about the advancement, it's about the flexibility. It's that the way that we have designed science labs in the past, is you pick a curricular area, like biology or chemistry, and you design to that. The goal of these is to be more multifunctional space, and then when combined with the classrooms next to them, it provides us a space here that going, remember, we want to be flexible enough where 75, 80 years from now, people are like, "Oh, this was really smart to do it this way." So the way that we can design to look intelligent in the future is to build more flexible spaces, which is one of the goals here.
We're not looking at upgrading, improving, changing the existing science labs?
Oh, it'll be more modern than the.
No, but I meant, are we looking to do anything to the existing labs?
Oh, the existing labs are not part of the master facility plan.
So remember, too, that the new science labs weren't originally within, these were extra.
No, this is meeting the, one of the board goals of going beyond the original. Thanks, Mike, for what you pointed out.
Yeah, if we were able to do things to the existing, the existing science rooms, we'd be going beyond, beyond.
Beyond, beyond.
Yes.
It's worth noting, Dan wasn't on the board then, 10, 12 years ago, we redid the science labs at South as much as we could, given that the walls were fixed. So we did renovate and take back some prep rooms and large classrooms, so we did those about 10 years ago.
Thank you.
So we wanted to spend some time today on really a key component of the master facility plan for both schools, and that's the student commons. This is a space that you currently don't have at either school, and this is a space that's going to be significant, not because they're just going to make the buildings look a little differently, but these go a long way into being purposeful and really changing the student experience. So as we look at the commons at South, you know, because these are multifunctional spaces, we're starting to think about them in terms of zoning, how certain areas could lend themselves to certain activities over others. So like areas directly adjacent to the food service areas might be more active areas. This area that I'm kind of highlighting in this blue box, that's currently the area that your two art rooms and your two food labs are in the B corridor. So that's kind of a one-story space, that's going to be a little bit more intimate. And then when you walk kind of into this triangular area, that's going to be a high-volume kind of three-story space. And then all along there, there's breakout rooms and what we call nooks and crannies that even more independent study and quiet study could happen. We're even considering the outdoor space, what's remaining of the courtyard, as a significant space of the commons. That's important at both schools, that there's, you know, it goes back towards to student choice, that we're providing outdoor areas and indoor areas, and we're considering them all part of the commons. These are areas that could be supervised well from the inside, but also accessed and used by students. So as we start to take a look at sort of what this commons look like, if you look at this image on the left, if you could imagine, you're in the third floor of South High, you're in one of the science rooms looking down on the courtyard. So the pond is kind of just off the screen to the left. And then as we kind of imagine, that would actually be indoor space, and you'll be looking down onto the future commons from the third story. So here you see kind of that large connecting stair that has access to all three floors. We talked a lot in our conversations about the commons as, how can it not only be activated on the ground floor, but how can we activate the commons on all three floors? So this connecting stair provides access to all three floors, but you see, it also allows for some of those small group collaboration areas as students are moving up the stairs. And here, there's connection to the second floor, or you could continue up and connect to the third floor. This kind of, these rooms kind of highlighted in blue back there, those are the study lofts. Those are more spaces that are considered part of the commons that look down onto the first floor. Again, those are all access from the collaboration stair that look down onto the commons either through a railing on the second floor, or in this case, with a full glass wall on the third floor. So there's more opportunity for that third-floor room to be a little bit more quiet. There's even some conversations about making it more of a faculty kind of centric space on the third floor. Couple other things happening is, you know, we're trying to use every square foot that we can of the commons. So in this case, the stair comes down onto a platform, and like North High, this platform kind of extends and becomes seating. So you could park a table and a chair up to this platform, students could sit on that. There could be power inside of there. And then as well as you start to see the connection to the outside. Like Amy said, you know, this is a work in progress, so one thing we are articulating is, you know, how that outside would be paved and landscaped. Right now, it's showing a little bit more pavement than we'd like. We'd like to soften it up with a little bit more grass and landscape in there, too. The images on the right are just suggesting the floor surface. This is a kind of a porcelain tile plank that would be used on the main floor of the commons. It's a low-maintenance, highly durable material. And then you're starting to see glimpses of some other things that you'll see in some additional slides, but the idea of the college and the career center being directly adjacent and accessible from the commons, and even some indoor plantings to help soften up the space and get, we talked about greenery earlier, get some of that green, greenery inside the commons as well. And then a lot of daylight coming in through this curved wall, so it really pours in. And this is something we're studying via daylight models, but even potentially some skylights, you know, if we need more daylight along that wall and into those classrooms that we could look at. So here we are at the ground floor. This is looking back at the current courtyard as it is right now. And then this is kind of the new shot of the commons as it sits right now. So in this case, we're actually standing on the ground floor, and we're looking back So in this case, we're actually standing on the ground floor and we're looking back towards the entry of the library back here. So on your right are the entrances to the deans and the counselors, the College Career Center, and the attendance office and the dean's office there, too. So this is that kind of curved wall with the plantings on top. The idea is that, you know, you saw on the plan, those curved walls that kind of connect all these spaces together. Whenever a student or a teacher experiences that curved wall in the space, it'll be kind of this new material that you currently don't have. It's currently proposed as a wood material. But that's kind of a way of giving some identity to these curves and kind of a wayfinding element, too. And then on the left, again, kind of using every square foot we can, there's actually small group rooms that are enclosed behind glass that'll be underneath this collaboration stair. So students have access to those rooms for more collaborative quiet work or where they need acoustic separation from the commons.
Is there planning to like add a lot more color to this or is this like the approximate, like how you're gonna wanna?
This, I kind of explained, this is like the coloring book that may be halfway colored at this point. So we're still working on where materials go and what might be colors.
What's been planned, it's just the rest of the frills are.
Right, particularly in areas that you see as like white. So, you know, where you do see a color, that's where we're proposing, you know, the wood material I pointed out. And then pops of color to give some identity to each of these spaces. And then the columns have yet been uncolored at this point.
My quick question is, what kind of things are we looking at to absorb some of the sound? Because I look at it and, well, we just had a little remodel at the library. And it's like going into an echo chamber because it's got that laminate or floor planking and then vermicata-type tables and chairs, and there's nothing to absorb the sound. And it's terrible. So, you know, I don't know what kind of things we have planned. I don't know if that wood there is sound absorbing and, or does it bounce off of it? You know, I'm just thinking, 'cause our kids can get loud.
Right, no, that's a, that's a, that's a good point. And there's a number of factors at play. We'll work with an acoustician specifically for this space. And then he'll generate, he or she will generate reports for us to base our material selection off of. So if need be, yes, that wood could be absorptive materials. We're even talking about how all this surface that's currently white right now, even the ceiling, could be acoustic material, too. That'll be kind of a back and forth between the material selection and the acoustic report that's generated from the space. Some early conversations with the acoustician, the shape of the room does a lot for us, too, in terms of acoustics. But there's gonna be more in terms of material selection, too.
I just didn't want to get there and find out.
Right.
Maybe to do some things where we hang things from the ceiling as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Ceiling clouds.
I wanted to go back to the, this is something I didn't catch, I didn't, I didn't catch before. The stair that, as it comes all the way down, the fact that you're proposing that it might land on a little bit of a raised area, platform, I don't see that articulated in any of the floor plans. So to, how, how is that, to what extent is that happening? So there, the bottom, that was a good shot.
Two steps.
Right there. How, that floor level change, how is that happening in plan? To what extent is that platform exist?
Currently, the thinking is about two steps high, about bench height. And then to extend enough to create another moment like this, to get, you know, maybe a group of five to six students, kind of another station of furniture on that platform.
Go back to the, go to the floor plan?
Let me get a clean one here. So this is actually shown right here, if you look very carefully, about.
That's it right there?
Yeah.
But it looks like it goes straight out to the outdoors at that height? Or is that a down step, too?
There'll be two steps down, yeah.
To the outside?
Not to the outside.
This, this, okay, just, just to the main floor. And then the outside would be equal to that? So it would be raised a little bit?
The outside would be equal to the first floor level of the entire school.
Okay, so there's two steps down to go to the outside also.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm.
I'm okay.
Just one quick question on the, if you go back to the picture we were looking at before. When you're looking at the different like stair areas that you step up to, it looks like there's like a big step. Do you know how like much of a difference and change there is? I don't know if it's just like the way the picture looks right now, but.
Right here?
Yeah, that like separation looks like it's like at least a foot.
That is the result of this being an in-progress work. There will be no separation of the floor there and it'll be on the same level as it's landing. So there's no step.
Like a step up or anything?
No. So the next, as this view evolves and we continue sharing it, those things will start to kind of refine itself.
Can you go to the next slide? Next couple, I'm sorry. There you go. So the classrooms above the administrative commons area, you're showing as being glass windows. Any concerns as far as distractions for students in that classroom as they're looking out onto the commons?
You know, the question has come up, and you'll see in some of the other schools, there's ways we could address that, too. Much like, if you look here, this is proposing a film on the glass that kind of radiates to fully transparent. We could use something like that on the classrooms, too, if distraction is a concern. So you have visibility out with some kind of barrier when students are seated.
And still lets the daylight through the space.
I really liked what you did at North. I don't want to steal your thunder on that. But did you have any thoughts of trying to incorporate something like that at South?
Yes, so those are things we're considering. You'll see another way of doing it in addition to this gradient graphic is maybe a super graphic on more of a translucent glass than, than a clear glass. So that is something we're considering here, too. So this is roughly just the same view, just kind of turning a little bit more to the north so you could better articulate the idea of those small group rooms. This view kind of shows the better idea of how that gradient pattern can happen on glass. In this case, for the South Commons, we're proposing a blue color for that, for that gradient. And now we're moving kind of further into the commons. Here, we're sort of in that one-story space, so we're actually standing approximately where the old food lab was. And we're looking back at the entrance of the new auditorium. So a number of things going on. So here's the, that new cafe. But again, because this is a new curved feature in plan, we're kind of reintroducing that wood material. And then we're really trying to highlight the entrances to the auditorium, which will be the further, furthest right and furthest left kind of entrance. And this is starting to suggest the idea of super graphics and kind of large signage to help identify those. Those are things that are also progressing to maybe even introducing some signage on the wood wall, too, to really mark that those are the front door to the auditorium. And then even suggesting some graphics on the walls just to designate the restrooms. And then some tile and some pops of color for the cafe, too. This is where we have space to use an acoustic ceiling material, but also break it up with what we're calling these sort of sunbursts, which are kind of an accent piece of light fixtures that might be on every other column. So as you look down that corridor, it really breaks up the space and kind of gives some interest to the eye rather than just being one continuous ceiling. And then even thinking about video monitors and where those might fall in the commons is something that's currently ongoing in discussion, too, which you see here on the right.
And in the same context of multi-use, multi, and being flexible space, that cafe could also serve as your ticket booth for the theater as well.
Or a Starbucks.
Or a Starbucks. Well, we've been referring to everything as this cafe is kind of Starbucks-y and like, so grab and go.
When our parents or volunteers are trying to sell shirts and everything, I mean, right now they set up in tables in the hallway.
Well, nothing's better than theater and a Frappuccino.
Except you're gonna drink it outside.
Yeah. Well, that's why you get the tables.
So we're gonna look north as standing on the first floor of the commons. This is kind of the existing view as it stands today from the courtyard. And then looking back north, so here you see that entrance to the auditorium that was on the previous view. And then here are some of those new windows into the classrooms that look down to the commons below, which is a great opportunity for graphics or some type of pattern on the glass. And then looking back, again, highlighted in blue would be the north study loft. That's the study loft on the second floor that looks down and the third floor as well.
Now, one of the keys here is all that glass that is outside that now becomes inside is replaced, right? With better acoustical material to make sure that those classrooms aren't getting any of the sound from the commons bleeding into those classrooms.
And then we're gonna start transitioning to the kind of the progress we made on the outside and how these buildings are gonna start to look from the outside. We always start with kind of just a study of, you know, the current materials that are on the building that we're all familiar with. But it's predominant kind of red-orange brick color. Is it the brick kind of of choice? There's aluminum on the outside. You have that in your window framing, some glass, obviously. There's some stone banding on the windowsills and up top. There is some slate on the building. The original building kind of has a slate band, slate frieze, as we call it, kind of near the top. Some of the later additions, that slate's been replaced with a metal panel that just looks like the same color. And then, of course, we all know it's sort of the teal kind of coping that's predominant around the building. And then one thing we did take away is that we need to address that teal in some way, shape, or form. So that's something we'll be looking at throughout the whole exterior building, kind of how do we address that? So this is a view of the current cafeteria entrance. So those are the doors into the B corridor. This is where the new student entrance is gonna be. But perhaps more importantly than the building is actually how the site is functioning here. So in this case, because of the new main entry of the school, we're actually flipping the bus drop-off and parking and the visitor parking. So currently, you have buses kind of parked up to, I want to say maybe right about here. And here's your visitor parking. We're just gonna do a flip of that so that the visitor parking and the bus drop-off kind of are near the main entrance of the school. There is some separation between the two parking lots. There's about a 30-foot peninsula of hardscape and landscaping that's there just to help separate the traffic. But then it also allows both parking lots to kind of have access to the main entry. And back to this existing view as it sits today. And then how it's proposed to look as the new main entry. So curves was obviously an important part of the planning that you saw on the floor plan. So this main entry actually brings those curves out to the outside. So this idea of this curved canopy that, for the most part, follows the curve of the parking lot below. Introducing kind of a metal panel material. And then on the other side, this is, it's a phenolic panel that has a wood grain to it. So a new warm material for the outside of the building that you currently don't have anywhere else. And then these are all windows into the community room, so lots of daylight and visibility into the community room. And then to help either, or even further emphasize the main entry, there's this kind of language of putting a frame around the main entries of the building with some signage that, you know, will read "main entrance" to help further identify visitors who are coming, where the front door of the building is. Some benches out there for students to sit, the flagpole. Here you see the fly tower and the auditorium beyond. And you start to see that same articulation of framing certain pieces. That's just one method of just kind of help break up the volume of that. That's a large fly tower that you're gonna have and a big box of an auditorium. So it helps kind of break up the scale of those large volumes and allow us to maybe put different colors of material on there to help break that up, too.
And this is still like a work in progress, but is there, has there even talk about how you're gonna relocate the solar panels that were currently on the front of the building?
Yes, we've identified that they need to be relocated. We're working with Ed and Omar on where those might be. Some areas are kind of identified on these high-volume spaces so that they're still visible from the street. People can see that solar is still happening at South. It just won't be at the main entry.
Thanks.
And then this is a view of the same entrance just from the visitor parking. So one thing the curve does, it kind of helps you address both parking lots at once. So we just saw the bus parking lot sort of, kind of has the concave portion of the curve. This kind of faces the other way, but with some vertical surface that you could put some signage on. So you're addressing people coming from the visitor parking lot there, too. We're currently working with the school district and our landscape architects on the articulation of that plaza. But we're working with things like maybe relocating the donor bricks up to the main plaza, the Mustang statue up here, too, along with introducing some green space. But really just having an open plaza where students could quickly get under the canopy and in the front door. So we're gonna, we're gonna swing around to the northeast addition. This is the corner of Dunham and 63rd, looking back at the 1999 addition as it stands today. And then a shot of the proposed new addition. This is one area of the master facility plan where you have brand-new instructional classrooms and science labs on the second floor. So again, with that kind of framing element, we really wanted to highlight those spaces and get as much daylight pouring into those spaces as we can. It faces north, which is very good for solar orientation. You get a lot of favorable light coming into those spaces. Where it does turn the corner and face east, you'll see those vertical sun fins, which will help shade the eastern sun in the early mornings from that corner room. Down below, you'll see, those are where the art rooms are. So you'll see kind of full-height vertical glass and sort of these concentrated moments. That, again, is to help get daylight as far into the spaces as we can, but also a lot of, a lot of wall space on the classroom side, because they're art rooms, they need a lot of wall space for, for storage. But giving them ample daylight, too. And in some cases, you'll see these are doors, so those art rooms have direct access to sort of this covered patio on the northeast addition. We'll have some masonry that actually matches the existing brick that's currently on the building. But this has kind of proposed a new kind of neutral masonry color that's complementary of the red brick. You also saw this at the main entry, but introducing a new masonry just to give some relief to the red brick that's throughout the exterior.
Any discussion on putting some seating out under the balcony for those classrooms?
Yeah, seating, even landscape is something we're considering. We've heard the art classes like to have subject matter. So whether it be plantings or plantings with statues in them, something that they could base some programming off of.
Be nice to have a viewpoint from 63rd and Dunham, looking back at this new wing through the new soccer second field, just to get a scale of what it would look like.
Right. We do have a view, slight move back, but what's missing in this view is the softball field and where that falls, so.
That's still, that's nice. I think that's what you asked for at the meeting last time.
Right. As this evolves, you'll start to see, you know, the extent of where the field actually sits in that. But so here you see sort of those curved art or science and classrooms on the second floor. This is full-height glass into that art gallery space that separates the existing building and the new addition. And then this is sort of, these are sort of those common spaces that you saw on the floor plan outside of the science room that this classroom can open up and spill out onto this space.
I think that just, you know, not being an architect myself, but just being someone who knows something is good when they see it. I think that just makes that portion of the school so much more attractive than what it is today. And the fact that it's all science and STEM, you know, classes, and it's got this new, modern, you know, glass field to it. I think it's perfect for that space. I think it's beautiful. And I think it'd be just a great, nice gateway to South High School from, you know, coming. I always come down Dunham when I come to South. And it's just, it's just a, just gonna totally transition the feel of the school.
I'm just gonna let, I'm just gonna let Don speak for me for the rest of the evening.
No, you are.
I agree.
I agree with you. Well played, well played.
Nice one.
You know, I pitched that reading to you.
Didn't I?
See now, I'm going to be the one.
Well done. Yeah, it's great.
See, Don, I don't like it.
You don't?
No.
Oh.
I lived in a sorority house that almost looked exactly like that for three years.
Really? This must have been a very modern sorority house.
It was 1968 when it was built.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, one of the comments I had made before about all the elements that we're seeing so far, I think, is that they're nice extrapolations from the original architecture. You know, a more modern interpretation of what's there. So, we're not, you know, we're not throwing things on the building that just don't have anything to do with the vocabulary that already exists. I think this is just, I think it's really, really well done.
Yeah, we've gone through a lot of iterations so that it doesn't look like we just dropped an addition from the future onto the side of the buildings, right? We've tried to make everything integrate.
We've seen the result of that at North High, right? You know, where we get.
The evolution of it.
Get these different, you go, okay, this was done then, this was done, you know, and now we're trying to correct so much of that.
Yes.
And I think, you know, when we see the rest of that, hopefully you'll agree that that's been done very successfully, too. But, so, we're not making that mistake. But it really is going to be a nice signature piece from 63rd Street, at least from the, you know, from the eastward approach. I agree with what Don was saying.
Yeah, I think it looks great from a security perspective. I'm assuming all the glass will have film or something on it where you can't see in, but allows all the light in and all that.
Yeah, we're looking at security laminated glass, particularly for any glass that is on the first floor adjacent to the ground plane. One more view, and that's going back to the events entry. These are kind of current photos of what the event entry or looks like today. And then the proposed shot of what it would look like when the project's complete. So, what's kind of neat about where you have the main entry, the northeast addition and the events entry is you're kind of making an intervention on three primary sides of the building. So, keeping the same language with the curved, the wood on the underside of the canopy here, you know, making the event entry highly visible with some signage through the glass. And in this particular place, this is the black box theater. So, we're really giving some attention and some visibility into the black box. We were chatting with that group in particularly, and they're known for being in the bowels of the building, you know, in storage closets and basements. So, in this case, having all that support space on the main floor is an opportunity to really showcase that program. And you can imagine visitors coming in for a drama, get a sneak peek of the scenery onstage as they walk into the event entry. Even the scene shop right here, we're proposing some daylight into those spaces as well.
It's going to be a lot of fun. And you're right, you know, those things that are happening right now with our black box, I mean, it's a shame that those things are hidden away.
Right.
It's just an absolute shame, so, yeah. I love the curvature, the main entry, the entry to the, you know, swimming area and the auditorium, and then the STEM lab. All of that curvature is just absolutely gorgeous to me.
I think it was, we heard from the students, was it blocky but good was a common thing we heard from the students, so it was a way of kind of helping break that up a little bit.
I just want to say, I just really like, like, the fun. Like, it makes you, like, thinking about showing people your school or coming for certain events and stuff with your family, it like, it's an exterior that, you know, you're proud of when you walk through it. And I think that's something that's important to be able to put in, like, something where people are wowed even when they just see, you know, your school and being in a community like ours. Like, it really is going to change the whole view of how people see our school.
Yeah, that goes to the student experience, you know.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily about the architecture. It's really about the experience that you're giving students, even as you're approaching the building, too. So, at this point, I'm going to invite Jim Nagel to talk a little bit about the phasing of all these projects and when and how they'll be done.
Jim, could you go over by the microphone?
Sure. So, Mike, you're right, it's going to be fun. I hope that three years from now that you thought it's fun along the way.
Here you go again. You did this before.
Setting the expectations.
It's cold water after.
These guys get to talk about all the cool pictures and the fun part. So, both schools, obviously, the work is phased over the next two and a half years, almost three years. It's, at South, the work really is going to start in just a couple of months. We actually, we go, the first bid packages are on the street two weeks from today. Come spring break, both schools will be starting to mobilize with construction fence and trailers and that kind of thing. And shortly thereafter, be starting work. And so, at South, the key points for this summer are the renovation of the admin area, and that's probably the biggest, most invasive part that'll be happening this summer. That includes the work with the new canopy at the main entrance, as well as the relocation or the renovation of a couple of classrooms, reconfiguration along that east hallway. And then the first part of the culinary arts area, just because part of, because the demonstration kitchen occurs in the new building, that piece won't be done this summer, but those other areas in yellow will be, all be done this summer. And then what's not shown on here is the new turf field. That work starts right away. That starts to go in in April with the earthwork and the stormwater detention. And then it goes, really goes until, it should be playable by the end of the summer.
Are we, maybe, I didn't see any imagery, which is fine, or timing, on, are we redoing the bleachers and underneath the bleachers at the football field at both North and South? I didn't see that in here at all.
Yeah, that's coming. Sorry, Jim. We've got a couple of things that are holding us up with stormwater at North and cellphone tower at South. So, that's kind of, those plans are on pause as we work through those last couple of issues. We've been shooting all along to do that construction from the end of the fall sports season, next year.
Right after football season, yeah.
Yep. All of the outdoor fall sports complete. We tear down the bleachers, get to work, and then they're back up and running in time for, at least the bleacher portion is done in time for spring sports.
This year.
It's 2019 through spring of 2020, yeah. But that is pending that we can get the cellphone tower stuff here at South worked out and the stormwater retention stuff at North worked out. If not, there's standalone projects that could either be done in the summer between the spring and the fall season or in the winter between the fall and the spring season.
Do you know what kind of structure it's going to be, if it's like a brick structure, whether it's going to be just another metal bleachers or yet, or is that yet to be determined?
It's yet to be determined pending all of this. It's kind of taken a timeout as we figure out these other things. So, I don't want to speak out of turn until we get these things resolved and then they can go back to designing that space.
Okay, thanks.
So, later this summer, the work on the new arts and STEM addition will start at South. And that area will take about a year to construct. And so, by, so that, the work in that area will be ongoing throughout the school year next year. So, during the fall of 19 and the spring of 20, that'll be a construction area, but be ready for the fall of 20 school year. Then, you know, the big push comes in the spring and summer of 2020, which is when we start work on both the Commons and the auditorium. And, you know, both those are really the key elements of the project here at South. And so, in the spring of 20, we want to be able to start foundations for the Commons area. And then as soon as school is out in May of 20, we would demolish the existing auditorium and begin work on the new. And so, that work, again, that continues through the fall of 20 and into the spring of 21 to be ready for the fall semester of 21. And then in the summer of 2021, does, we don't have that.
It's the first floor only.
First floor only, all right. So, I didn't know that was separated by floors. So, first, then in that final summer, we'll be doing work in the library and the classrooms and then the cafeteria area or just off of the cafeteria. So, both schools, it's a, construction starts this spring in a couple of months and runs for about 29 months. So, it runs through August of 2021.
Jim, just to clarify, everywhere you say fall, you mean the first day of school year?
Or the fall semester. I've already been chastised for saying that. My team has already said, really? Did you really? But no, that's, that's, yeah, it's to have, have those areas ready for, for school in the, for the start of the fall semester.
And I always like to clarify substantial completion, so there might be punch list items and a little few things that still need to be tweaked, but you'll be able to occupy and conduct classes.
The restrooms will all be working.
Restrooms, what?
We noticed it says "open vault."
Right.
Yeah, not completely.
Exactly. So, Jim, if I, just quickly, if I can add to that, as we go through both North and South and some of these designs, what we can see is phase that we're going to be doing this summer is getting bid out very soon. And we have more time for some looks and some changes for those other areas. A key component right now is we need to isolate on the main office over at South and some of the projects that are happening for this summer because that's going out. And Kurt, like your point to the classroom, we still have time to look into that, which is great. So, we're kind of expediting what we need to do now to lock in no mistakes for what our construction is for this summer. And that's why we're moving so quickly here. We still have some time to go through it because you can see there's a two-year span here. There's still time to review and look at some of these other areas where we could tweak a little more. I just wanted to let everybody know that because the bidding process and the phasing, it starts going fast and you got to isolate and really key on the areas we're doing right away.
And Jim, I'll add a couple of things to that is, so, where college and careers is going here, you can see that, too, sticks out into the new Commons. Well, the new, that area, the new Commons, won't be built by this summer. So, that Commons or the, that piece of the entry really comes later in the project, whereas the, but the rest of the admin area will be done. If you go back to the image of the new, the new main entrance at South with the wood look panels and the metal panels and that kind of thing, you know, where we are right now in the middle of January, you know, the likelihood is that that entire canopy may not be 100% complete in time, just based on material availability, the shop drilling process, et cetera. Those are some higher-end materials that take longer to get. So, that'll be a 100% functional area. We still may be coordinating with school on how to finish out some of those areas with some of those types of materials. So, so again, to Amy's point, that's probably a little beyond punch list, you know, installing metal panels. But, but just given where we are, you know, it's key to get those security pieces done early in the project. So, it's going to just require a little more coordination with the operations to do that.
Jim, when, when do you think we'll be doing the parking lot flip?
This summer.
It will be this summer.
Yeah, that takes place this summer.
Okay.
Because the entryway will change.
That's what I was guessing, but.
Yep.
Jim, as you build out the administrative corridor, does that go to the existing courtyard?
Yes, so.
So, are we not going to have a hallway?
We're in the, we're working on options there, whether it's a temporary hallway, whether it's, you know, that's something we're, in fact, part of our structural investigation over Christmas break was to see what those foundations along that wall were like.
Did you have an exterior hallway?
Potentially a temporary exterior hallway, yes, which we'll call it exterior, but it might be a temporary hallway that encroaches into that courtyard and, you know, that we build out to create, ease a transport there. Now, that, you know, that's only an issue on the first floor, so on the other floor you can still, so we're working all that with Omar and Ed.
Well, no more options once we get the structural back.
Right, which is in a week or two.
One last point on first phase, there is abatement, asbestos abatement, that's going to be needed in that hallway specifically, the entire hallway where there's nine-by-nine tile. So, that will be happening, too. So, we're intertwining all the, try to get it done in the timeframe. So, that will also be a floor, perhaps after spring break, that will be a concrete floor. So, there will be a lot of changes going on, a lot of pieces of the puzzle happening. And everyone at the schools is going to be working with us, going to try to get through each stage here.
And an important part of all of this planning is to make sure that we maintain the correct classroom counts and that kind of thing. So, through both here and at North, there are no temporary classrooms, no trailers for temporary classrooms. All, you know, all the, everything is still contained within the building. You know, this, this new entrance for events, it's not just athletics anymore, it'd be for events, you know, that, that's a great, you know, I think everybody thinks from a design standpoint, that's a really, you know, inspiring entry. It's also, if you think about how much activity takes place, you know, with drop-offs and pickups and just traffic in general, you know, and knowing that, you know, in the summer of 20, that that whole auditorium is going to be gone and under construction and you've got a, you know, that fly tower's, you know, 60, 70 feet tall, you've got big construction going on there. And so, that's going to be a real challenge, just in terms of logistically and making sure that's worked out in closely with school operations, so.
I'm going to add one more tidbit, and it'll be consistent for both schools. I know we're running long at South. The safety of these schools is going to be huge from my perspective, regardless of what's going on or who's in there and what's getting necked down. So, that's something that we're going to be working very hard at to keep this building safe for all entryways. And also, fire alarm. We'll be putting a new fire alarm system in both schools. In each project and each phase, we will be putting in the new and the old might still exist. We might have two systems running at the same time, but ultimately looking to get rid of the old and having the full new system here in a couple of years.
Really cool. Really good.
All right. So, now we'll take a look at North, again, starting with the existing first floor plan. So, Main Street running off to your right. You have Ogden up at the top, just off the page, Prince Street in the back, over here on the left. And then Forest Street is kind of right here in the middle. So, one key thing here at North is that it has many levels that we're dealing with. So, everything that's highlighted in kind of that light-red, pinky tone is two feet higher than the rest of the school. And then we also want to highlight the original building, 1928 building, and, and as you see in some of the solutions, putting that really on a platform and on display. So, the proposed first floor plan, I'm going to kind of walk you through kind of the way the, when you'll see the enlarged plans. So, we're going to go from Prince Street and work our way towards Main Street. So, you have your student event entryway that's going to have a new secure entry point. You have an addition that has a new gym. You'll have your loading dock area with CMG, TV, radio, classrooms, and multi-needs. So, we move down through this space, your kitchen serving area, followed by the learning commons dining area. This is right here where the highlighter is, was your courtyard. We're infilling that as a new addition, and that's going to be your main learning, tall volume space for your learning commons. Flanking the learning commons is your college and career and student support services main entry nurse, relocating the nurse. Having some addition, but mostly renovation to your existing building to to your existing building to create fine arts, jewelry, ceramics, photo, digital art. On the second floor, some, some additional classrooms above what's currently the white gym, creating a connection to a stair that is now going to be accessible. Right now, you kind of have to go through another classroom in order to get to it. Above the new gym, you're going to have a multipurpose room and athletic loft, which connects to an adjacent athletic loft, which will be used for gymnastics or in other sports. Your library, renovation of the, the library with two classrooms off of the library, and then some CTE program space. On the third floor, there's some classroom spaces that are getting remodeled, and then some, a science lab suite. Let's take a dive into CMG in the loading dock area. So as you come in off of Prince Street, you're going to have a secured loading dock that has, is going to have a masonry wall that kind of surrounds that perimeter to really block off the truck, the visible view of the trucks backing in. And it will also be gated. And then for CMG, we're looking at having some trash collection, looking at reducing the number of recycling bins so that pickup for recycling, instead of happening daily, it will happen less frequently, which will minimize noise for the beeping of the trucks that back up into that space as well. Because right now, because you don't have a compactor for recycling, they have to come and pick up every day. There's no place to store it. Moving down, TV radio gets kind of repositioned into its new home with some studio space and classroom space. Looking at a new kitchen and serving area, and then the, the new gymnasium. As we continue to move east, that serving area is going to open up and onto what we will refer to as the alleyway. And this wall right here is your existing 1928 building. You have your staff dining, dining for the students, as well as it's going to feed into the learning commons as, that's kind of salmon colors, the two feet above where the lighter yellow color is. So we'll show you how we articulate that, those differences in spaces, as well as we get into the drawings. Just further north on the page is culinary arts. On the second floor, so immediately above where we were just looking, you're going to have your athletic, your multipurpose room, and then your athletic loft. Part of the athletic loft, so you see this purple dash line right here, everything kind of on the left of the purple line and towards the bottom of the purple line is new addition. So we're able to, what this does is the new addition portion helps us control the height so that we can make sure that clearances for gymnastics are available for certain, for the equipment that's needed, the higher volume spaces. And then everything up towards the north of that line and to the right is your existing balcony space. It's going to be opened up for, again, more gymnastics area. The library gets renovated, and then two classrooms off the library. Oh. Also, in terms of accessibility, we're adding in a new elevator right over here in the corner that feeds all four floors. So it'll go down to the basement to your O50 study hall that's currently there. So you'll have accessibility down to that study hall as well. Quick layout of gymnastics, this is just a layout showing that all the boys' equipment fits in the space. And then we did another one to make sure that all the girls' equipment would fit. Looking at.
What are we, what are we using that balcony for right now?
Probably wrestling?
No.
Well, it's.
Gym classes use it. We use it for a lot of the Sundays to let kids to play ping pong, play mags, and different, different activities we meet out there.
It's mostly PE, yeah. That's 90% of it. Your bleachers up there for when you have a bigger game to pull up, but it's all the way against the wall. But most time, it's, unless you get, it's changed. It's PE classes.
The other side, where we have mats, so this side is open for PE to use, and they will rub up there, dance.
It seems to me it's, it's probably not as well utilized right now as, this, this, this increases the utilization of that existing space, which I think is a, is a real benefit to this plan. And so, just wanted to point that out.
The fact that it fits the equipment's the huge piece. Because right now, the current space would not do that.
Right. It's, it's, it's just a great example of, of joining new with old and, and getting more out of what you've got, because you're doing that in a good way, so.
And we're going to kind of move down to the southeast corner of the building and talk about the first-floor arts wing stu, suite. So as we go through the spaces, you have your learning commons kind of up over here, and the art studio kind of starts with jewelry, the jewelry studio. You have your ceramics studio with the adjacent kiln. Photography area with some shared space with 2D art, a computer lab, and some adjacent storage. Similar to South, you have access to the outside from your art rooms, a couple, the ceramics studio and the photography. We heard from a lot of the teachers that access to the outdoors for the curriculum is, is really a key point, and they would like to maintain that. On the second floor, CTE classrooms, that's where your engineering labs are, your fabrication labs. The child development space, so the one thing that's here, again, flexibility, child development is only used a handful of times throughout the day, but that room right now, the way it's set up, can only be used for child development. So by creating a space that has kind of your child development lab, where all like, the toys are, are housed and, well, the preschool kids are there, they can play in that area. But then where the, the teaching space occurs, for the classroom space, when child development isn't taking place, it can be used for other classrooms. On the third floor, science lab space, it's kind of a suite, and looking at two of these science labs that kind of open up to one another, so that curriculum can be shared, and also looking at different types of sciences. So one lab is most, three out of the four labs are very flexible furniture, movable tables and chairs, and the lab stations can pull up to the sides where all the, the water occurs and the infrastructure. Whereas the fourth lab is more permanent lab stations so that biology and chemistry can occur. We're going to hop back down on the first floor and talk a little bit about culinary arts. So.
This is version like 62.
Yes. Unlike South, the culinary arts team over here at North, we kind of landed on a design that had lab stations that were kind of in these peninsula-shaped forms. Same number of lab stations as, as South has, with a demonstration kitchen and storage flanking. And this is where the elevator that I mentioned that goes up all three, or all four floors, including the basement, happens.
So we wanted to spend equal time on, on the commons at, at North, and like South, we started looking at the commons in terms of zoning, but with a slight twist at North. One of the early observations we all have is how landlocked and dense the North campus is. In many ways, it kind of takes on sort of an urban analogy. So in our planning and in talking with the school district, we even started kind of using this metaphor of these different urban zones, being the plaza, the market, an alley. And in fact, we've just started referring to the 1928 building as 1928. So that's kind of some, some buzzwords that kind of had built into our planning as we talk about these different spaces. But also thinking about sort of the different activities that could happen in here along with those spaces. So beginning with, we'll say, we'll say the market, where we see a lot of group study happenings, that's where students have access to these different resources, whether it be the demonstration lab that Amy just talked about, a culinary, popping into college career center, student activities, some small group rooms, popping into the bookstore for some of their needs, or visiting C-triple-S for a variety of needs that students might have. So that we kind of have been identifying as, as the market zone, but sort of each of those spaces having their own identity, and in many ways, their own storefront, if you will, so students can access. The other part is, is the alley, and that really stemmed from, you know, an urban trend of, you know, capitalizing every square foot that you have in the commons, and even using alley spaces for dining spaces. So that is the main access to the server, which is just to the left on the screen. But that is an area that butts up to the 1928 facade, and it's going to be one of those areas that's also a three-story, high-volume area with a lot of daylight coming in from above. And we'll see images of, of conceptual images of, of how that looks today. And then, of course, the 1928 building, that again, can be zoned through, through operable doors that could actually close off these small group rooms on either side, and even this larger group room from the rest of the commons, so that you have more flexibility in how those spaces are used before and after school. And then, just as we identified the new cafe space at, at South, again, a satellite food service space to help sort of alleviate the congestion for food service when we're considering full-period lunch periods for the student. But that being sort of the corner of the market and the 1928 was kind of a neat location to kind of house a satellite cafe. And then the plaza being sort of an indoor-outdoor space, that is currently where the existing courtyard is, that is a three-story volume with a lot of daylight coming in from above. That not only hap, not only happens on the inside, but you'll see through a high glass wall continues on to the outside for some outdoor spaces. So just like at South, where the remainder of the courtyard was considered part of the commons, this outdoor space here is actually considered part of the plaza, too.
I just have a quick question. Will North retain the outdoor eating space that it currently has, or not?
So that is where this outdoor space will come into play. So it provides some choice for students for outdoor eating. And we'll, we'll have some imagery of that space coming up. So we'll, we'll start with what we're calling the alley. So this is kind of a concept image of where that sits today. Still in progress. For example, the, the wall on the right hasn't been fully designed. But if, if there was a before image of this, you'd almost be standing outside looking at a dumpster at the loading dock, and now that's what this space is going to look like now. And in fact, part of this facade of the 1928 building is actually covered up right now. So part of this project is actually uncovering that, removing that building, and exposing this facade and restoring it all three stories. And then on the right, you'll see a series of openings. That's the way into the servery for the students. So this is about sort of an 18-foot wide hallway right now, so it's nearly three times the width of, you know, an average hallway in the school. But if you can imagine a lot of daylight and lighting and kind of emphasis on that 1928 facade as sort of a neat way for students to enter the servery, which you see laid out on the right. Again, another work in progress, but the idea of having large openings that students could come into with point-of-sale at each of those entries, and then zoning the, the servery based off of international food versus the grill versus, you know, more homestyle cooking, and then always trying to have the fresh fruits and vegetables on display right before the point-of-sale, so students have easy access to them. This is still in progress. We're still trying to consider the adjacent spaces, particularly the, the educational spaces that are happening in the corridor. And so we're trying to lay out the different zones of the servery accordingly, so make sure most of the noise happens further into the commons. And then the kitchen to support that, it's not shown right now, but there will be doors accessing that and pass-through, so that the kitchen prepares the food, puts it in these pass-through windows, the servery staff will then take it out and then stage it in the servery. And this is the corridor that leads directly back to what's currently the white gym, where CMG is, where easy access for loading and deliveries. So moving up to the market, so this is a current kind of line drawing of the, the courtyard as it sits today. What's missing is all the shrubs and landscaping that's in there right now. It's kind of an empty courtyard into the view of, of what it would look like. So I want to give particular emphasis to sort of this one-story portion below. What you're seeing here is the bookstore, a series of small group rooms, and sort of in between those spaces would be the student access to C-triple-S and student support services. So that's kind of the idea of, of the market, where each of these spaces might have its own identity emphasized through the color of it, and might have its own identity with the use of super graphics and, and some school spirit on the walls. But again, these spaces, and we'll get another view, kind of line the plaza for easy access to students to those different spaces. Still working on, on the structure that you see above, but the idea is there that we'll have an exposed kind of architectural steel roof with lots of daylighting coming in from above, so that, I mean, this almost feels like an outdoor space even though you're inside. This is the existing wall of, of the 1955 addition, which currently kind of has those ribbon windows and that beige brick. That brick will be stained to a gray color. We'll also introduce some new wood material on that wall, just to give it an, an updated material on that. And then a new pattern of windows based off of what's happening behind those spaces on the second and third floor. And on the right, you get a glimpse of the cafe kind of peeking out at the corner. We'll get another view later on.
Is that the, the raised floor that is currently the cafeteria?
Yeah. This right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you see that kind of platform with the seating built into it, where you imagine cushions on there with tables and chairs and power. We'll talk about this later, but a few other things going on. Just like at South, we talked about how the floors above are activated. So this is actually two small group rooms that are on the third floor, just opposite that instructional loft that happens on the third floor. And then on the second floor is an open bridge that looks down onto, onto the commons. So here, we're still in the courtyard, we're looking directly west. You start to see the corner of the original 1928 building that's currently in the courtyard right now. This all becomes interior space. And now you're looking down the market at all those different storefronts for those additional resources. The college career center off to the right, and down even further, you'll start to see the, the demonstration kitchen and the culinary labs, and a better view of, of sort of that cafe articulation kind of on those two platforms, with some seating that students could actually sit at the counter, but the idea of the food service happening right here. This is how we are addressing sort of those ribbon windows in the 1955 edition. From this perspective, in this case, this is new glass over those windows from the second floor to the third floor, and what you see is a superimposed graphic of the Trojan logo on that glass. So this is what the glass we were referring to earlier, that would be translucent, kind of smoky, so you don't necessarily see through it, but light still comes through. And then we could have a digital printed graphic on it of, of, of the Trojan, and you'll see some different perspectives coming up. And then always highlighting the 1928 facade, we're talking about ways that we could light that facade from the inside, much like you light a building from the outside right now, so it really feels like you're outside even though you're inside. And here's a better shot of sort of highlighting that, that 1928 facade. In some cases, you know, there's going to be areas of just cleaning that facade, there's going to be areas of restoring it, there's going to be areas of, you know, sort of recreating it where there's portions that have just been removed already and aren't there right now. So this kind of turns a corner behind the cafe, we'll kind of detail that, so it kind of has the same character as that 1928 building, but just a different perspective of, of the commons. Just like at South, the flooring here would be that porcelain flooring, actually same colors, it's just here to, used in a square pattern as opposed to a plank pattern. And if you could read it, it's actually a very large sort of checkerboard pattern on the ground, and that's starting to pick up from some of the brick checkerboard detailing of the 1928 building. It's a way of tying in the new floor with some of that original detailing. And then looking on the, at the plaza, so here we're at the, the existing second-floor bridge, looking north at the existing courtyard, and then the proposed plaza. So you get a better idea of the checkerboarding happening on, on, on the floor, on the platforms, you have a better look at the Trojan graphic. have a better look at the Trojan graphic on the glass, and then again, this is kind of still in progress, but the idea of a lot of daylight coming in from above.
Hank?
Yes?
Do you envision having or holding any accessories in this space?
I would imagine they could do all kinds of things in there. Yeah, I would think there could be anything from a dance to a concert to an alumni banquet to all kinds of things that could happen in that space.
Community events as well?
Yep. Community events, what's that?
Pizza Wars.
Pizza Wars.
Yes!
Yeah, the idea of the furniture that we put in there is that we need to pick furniture that works for us, but also can be shoved around and moved easily and kind of disappear off to the edges, so you could take advantage of that large, open space if you needed to.
I have a comment. I think the contrast of the architecture, like between the night, like the one side being modern and the other side being like the restored is really cool. I think it helps enhance the history of the school, like in the, from where we were to where we are now. I think it's really cool.
It's a great segue to our next slide, which talks about just that point.
Well done, Al.
But these are the materials that we see kind of around the 1928, so using the lighter wood tones for the platform and the café, but really, the 1928 is the aluminum, the stone, and then on the opposite side, taking your darker wood tones, the gray stain on the brick, the more modern look, so you really have that contrast between the 1928 and the new, the new architecture. I'll pause here, so we're going to take a look, kind of a 360 look, I forgot to show this at South, we do have one for South, too, if we need to go back, but we're going to put ourselves in the middle of the Commons and kind of spin around, just to get a different perspective of what it...
Are we going to be dizzy?
It won't spin fast.
Oh, okay.
Although, they can bring in the VR goggles sometime, and then you can really...
What would the sound be like if it's raining with that metal roof and glass on the ceiling? What's that going to sound like during a storm?
So, there's some things that we can look at for that. The deck material, they make things that help, it's called an acoustical deck, so it has like bat insulation in there to help minimize that. Similar to South, we'll be looking at the space acoustically with our acoustician to make sure that there's enough absorptive materials as well as reflective of all the hard surfaces that are there.
There'll be, for these spaces, there'll be extensive light and sound studies in advance to make sure that, you know, you don't sit in there and get cooked underneath a chunk of glass, or that it's so boom-y that you can't do anything inside of it.
It's raining real hard, though. You'll hear it.
Yeah, you'll hear it.
Or hail.
Oh, yeah. Just so it doesn't break.
It won't break.
Good point, though.
So, the second-floor bridge is open, the third-floor is enclosed glass.
Yep.
Correct.
And has, in the middle, there are two small meeting rooms.
Looks like it's got that view thing from like the Sears Tower. Oh, no, I'm sorry. There's no Sears Tower anymore, but...
Willis.
Orders will be solid, they won't be clear.
You mean, we won't be able to...
There won't be a glass floor.
Be cool, though.
No, it would not be.
No.
If by cool you mean terrifying, yes.
We could charge for that.
All right.
Yeah.
I paid not to go in there.
Yeah.
Here, I think we'll move on to the outside. So, we talked about the plaza kind of being an indoor-outdoor space, and there's actually an outdoor component to the plaza as well. So, we're going to, the next view is, we're going to slice the building right through the center of the plaza, running north-south, and take a side look at it. So, here you see, this is a space we were looking at in that 360 view, that actually continues past the glass, and that same articulation happens on the outside. This is the outdoor space that's available possibly for eating outside, before and after school, perhaps for queuing up before school, but the idea that you have an outdoor space adjacent to the plaza that could be supervised and also accessed by students. So, another shot, looking at a conceptual rendering of that Commons, we didn't talk about it, but we are thinking about video monitors in there, too, and then how that same kind of theme continues on the outside to this outdoor space, so the same articulation of windows, even that same stained brick is going to continue from the outside in the inside, and this wall is actually in the same plane as that stained brick wall you saw on the inside, too.
Even the patio will retain the checkerboard, so that the floor feels like it's one constant floor inside, outside.
So, from here, this is what this space currently looks like right now, so kind of right around the corner of 1928 would be that glass connection to the indoor plaza. And if we take a step back just from a different perspective here, you get a better idea of how that three-story glass facade is what looks into the plaza, and you could actually see the plaza, you know, come from the inside out. This here is the existing faculty parking lot that will remain.
Got the woman.
She's there.
She's there.
Kind of another shot closer up, you're standing in that sort of student plaza, looking in, and we often talk about the Commons at both schools, how it's activated even beyond the school day. So, someone just mentioned assemblies, but clubs, science fairs, and how that could happen even day and night. So, these are the art spaces directly to the right of the screen, they'll have direct access to this patio space, too, just like at South, they have access to that new patio. But the idea is that, you know, we make that as transparent as we can to really showcase the idea of the plaza continuing from the outside in, really highlight the 1928 facade, and really try to make as light of a touch as we can to that existing building with the new architecture.
This is actually the only view where you actually, you would actually see the 1928 building.
Right.
You can see, you can see, you're at a corner, you can see, there it is.
Right.
I like how they use the lighting to highlight that 28 building. So, even when you're standing in the Commons, and you turn and look at that building, you'll feel like you're outside, looking at a building outside even though you're standing inside.
Yeah. As we continue to share this image, you know, one thing we're looking at, this glass facade, is to Dr. Thiede's point about doing light studies, is perhaps introducing some light shading on that facade since it faces south, so that'll continue to evolve as we share sort of updated images with the board.
How hard is all this glass?
So, now, as we kind of move from the plaza and go to those other corners of major additions, we did the same thing here, we kind of studied the existing materials on the building. There's actually two different colored frame windows at North, there's a dark bronze and there's aluminum, but a lot of stone banding, too, and this doesn't show at all, but several, several different types of bricks. I think we're actually up to seven if you include some of the retaining walls. So, we want to pay close attention, and you'll see this in the renderings, to obviously the 1928 brick color and the 1999 brick color, because those are two areas that all, although they're so far apart in construction, they did at least try to honor some of the traditional detailing that was there in 1928. So, this is the existing shot, standing in that faculty parking lot, Main Street is right here along the right of the screen, this is how it looks today, this is how it will look when it's all said and done. So, the idea here was really to pick up that red brick that's on Main Street, so from Main Street you have a consistent look, a consistent brick color, and in this case, this two-story piece is actually a building addition. This higher volume right here is actually that existing building that we plan to re-clad so we could match the architectural detailing that happens along Main Street.
Thank you.
Sure.
It's like, who picked that brick color from...
Which one? There's so many, I mean, this is exactly, so, you know, here is a great, you know, this is, here we're trying to fix those problems, and then we're making sure that with what we're doing at South, we aren't making...
The same mistakes.
The same mistakes, yes.
You know, down the road, no one's going to be going and trying to fix anything anymore.
I hope 70 years from now, somebody isn't sitting around the table wondering why we did what we did.
What the heck were they thinking?
I think we're all on guard against that.
It was the lady that was pointing at everything.
Yeah, yeah.
There's the bird.
It's her fault.
So, we're going to continue swinging around, so we were just here at this corner, we're going to move to the next shot, which would take us back at this southwest corner, and take a look at the existing shot as it stands today and the proposed. So, what you're seeing here is some rework to that stair tower, in that case, we're going to kind of reconstruct it in the same manner as the 1928, so you see the windows around, the checkerboarding happening, and here you see that heavily landscaped kind of masonry wall that will make up the loading dock, so that masonry will be the same color as the 1928/38 building, and even have some of the detailing in terms of the brick pie last year's. What we haven't updated here yet is continuing this parkway, which is currently all asphalt right now, but getting some grass between the sidewalk and the curb.
That looks really nice.
What'll happen on this side of the building is, you'll have the 1999 addition that's maintained the architectural design of the 28/38 buildings. The Commons will then separate that from the 28/38, and then we're going to continue that theme on the second half of the building. So, really, the Commons and the fieldhouse space divide the newer from the older, and you're going to see that happen here.
I think we're going to stop here, but this is kind of where we're going to end, this is Prince Street Circle. This is the area of the building where I think the most brick colors are coming together at once. So, we went through several iterations of kind of which color to honor. I quickly want to point out, so this is the 1928 building back here, that will be the west, nope, the east side of the alley when you saw that in the rendering. So, that three-story picture of the alley with the skylights above, this will all be indoor space and will highlight that building. These loading docks and these dumpsters will be relocated elsewhere. So, the current shot of what stands today, we're actually going to step back a little bit and get a more wider shot of the proposed. So, the event entry stays, this is the new gym addition, and that's the entry to, it's currently the White Gym, but that'll be the entry to White, or CMG, and then a secondary entrance to the gym. But here, you know, this just changed, I think, within the past week, but really taken on the character of the White Gym for the new gym, and in this case, we would stain this red brick, there's not a whole lot of the 1999 red brick here, but we would stain that to match, so from this corner on, you have a consistent color and brick and detailing.
Oh, she lost her...
Yeah, we lost Sherelle.
I hate when that happens.
Can we go back to that view?
I thought it was in the hospital for a while.
So, what I'm wondering is, on the north face of the addition, could we, because, and I don't, so behind the trees right now, can we articulate that wall similar to what we're showing there for the west wall, except the windows wouldn't be windows, they'd be something like we have along Prince Street?
Yes, that we can. The reason we weren't showing windows, that wall's doing some things for us structurally.
No, we don't have windows, but just to create the relief in the brick.
Absolutely.
Similar to what we did on Prince Street, just to carry that, carry it around the corner.
Sure can.
Because, I don't know if we'll really have trees there, or not, actually, your plan shows trees on the one side, but no trees there, and then this view shows trees on the north side, but no trees on the left. I know, it's a process, and we're trying to get a look, but I just want, on that side, I don't know that we're really going to, yeah, recreate those recesses, when, you know, those recesses.
Sure can.
Yeah. I think it's a, I think it works great, I mean, just, it's such an improvement over what's there, I can't even put it in words, because what's there is just a total disaster functionally and aesthetically, and it's such a shame, because if you think about it, that's, you know, so many of our students, guests, people are coming in and out those doors all the time. So, this is going to create such a nicer impression, it's something I think the students in the community would be very proud of. All right, well done.
With that, Jim will bring us through the phasing.
So, the nice thing at North, we can do it all in one summer.
All right, John, just go.
Uh-oh.
Wake up.
Twenty-nine months' summer.
Much like at South, you know, we're going to focus on the security entrances this first summer, and then the key to North really is, the key to all of North's schedule is to move CMG into the existing White Gym over the course of this summer, so that by August, whoops, by August, we're able to demolish that part of the building again, as Jim was talking about earlier, we want to, you know, in terms of maintaining safety and security, you know, it's key to do that kind of heavy demolition outside of the school term. So, by the end of this summer, the areas in yellow will be complete, the building demolition and then starting construction for the new gym will be ongoing, and so, through fall, this coming fall, and then through next spring, we'll be building the new gym, and then by next spring, we'll be starting work in foundations in the new learning Commons area. So, much like at South, the new Commons construction goes from the spring of 2020 through the summer of 2021. At North, we're obviously, there's a lot of other tentacles coming off of the Commons there at North that get done during different phases, and so, the cafeteria work with the different levels and layers and relocations, that's a summer of 2020 project. The addition and the reconfiguration of the arts and science there is done really through two summers, a little bit of that takes place during the school year, but most of that is through two summers. And then, the last summer, we see all of the admin areas, and then kind of tying that all together, knitting it all together there at North during that last summer. The, you know, for the school year, for fall of '20, the new gym will be in place, including the loft areas there for gymnastics. We've got a little bit of work here at that corner of the building this coming summer, and then again, kind of the last pieces and parts of that third floor at North get tied in this, or in the third summer. You know, North, we, there's no new field, we will have the bleachers like Hank talked about earlier, you know, the goal is to start those this coming fall, once football's over, and to be able to get foundations in this winter, and be able, this fall, and then to be able to build through the winter, but that's flexible and kind of, and dependent on some of the other decisions that are ongoing. At North, you know, the actual logistics of construction is probably a little more straightforward, even though we're all over the school in terms of being able to, it's not, in terms of the disruption to the current flow of how people get in and out, it's a little bit less. You know, this summer, and, you know, once CMG moves, you know, this will still be a construction zone, there'll be, pedestrian traffic will be able to come in here, and then this entrance will be reconfigured, and, you know, we have worked with the Commons that'll be coming in this, the following two summers, but it's not quite as pervasive as that one corner, that advanced entrance at North, so...
I think it's impressive that you're, that at North, we're getting the, essentially the library and the cafeteria, starting in the summer, during the summer of 2020, right?
Right.
And it's also done.
Right, it's, yeah, it's a 10-week...
It's really, it's an aggressive schedule, and it's impressive that we can do that.
It is, you know, part of that, too... It is. You know, part of that, too, Mike, is just, you know, the impact of carrying that work over into the school year is costly, and it's very disruptive. And so, you know, it's kind of the nature of school construction, is you've got your ten weeks to do what you have to do.
I just, I really, I appreciate that we can do that.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
I know it's been a long night so far, but we have one final thing to go through, and it's just kind of where the next steps and where we are. So tonight, we're here. Couple weeks from now, the end of January, we're going out for bid, for the first bid package, and there'll be staggered bid packages that will continue ongoing until construction's complete. We have our village plan commission meeting in early February, and we open our bids then for our first, beginning in middle of February, followed by kind of hopefully concluding all the village council meetings. There's two council meetings, one on March 12th and one on March 19th. If all goes well with both of those, the village will approve us for planning and zoning, and we can start construction in April, as early as April. It's also pending village site permit review and approval. So that's really what's holding us up for start of construction. So pending, like I said, pending everything goes well, April is the earliest that we can start. And then completion, fall, or as Jim said, start of the fall school year of 2021. So, thank you very much for your time. Is there any questions that we haven't answered so far?
This is so exciting.
I've got a general question, not for White, but maybe more for Mark, Hank, and Jim. You know, I know we're, you know, we're operating under a GMAX contract, and it's a little early to be talking about cost savings and how we're gonna apply those savings. How is the team approaching decision-making with regard to the budget? I mean, so for example, what I'm trying to get at is, are we being conservative on our material choices at this point, and trying to build in some contingencies based on that conservatism? And if we do indeed save on these potential built-in contingencies, would we go back and potentially change some of that budgeting conservatism that we're implementing at, you know, today's point in time? Does that make sense?
I can tell you what our philosophy has been to this point, is if zero is total low budget, design and materials, and 100 was the most expensive thing out there, we're shooting for a 75-80 in our materials and design of space. And we want stuff that, you heard them say, low maintenance, durable, stands the test of time. We're looking for those kinds of things and those kinds of finishes, like what you saw today. So that's kind of the philosophy that we're designing around. And then, you know, we'll obviously be making decisions as it gets closer to putting things in place, and how many outlets, and all of those kinds of things. We'll all kind of play into that. So that's kind of the standard we're designing and building around. We believe with that design and build concept, we should have contingency left. Then we'll have choices to make. At what point do we think we've progressed enough past a phase that that money becomes available, rather than we're saving it for future contingencies? If that chunk comes available, that's when we'll take items to the board and say, based on this, here's our list of things that we would like to add and do and complete, which includes, you know, probably 50 to 60% of our classrooms that aren't being touched as part of this project, to revitalize those spaces. But we have a whole list of other requests that have come. Remember, this plan was designed really in earnest five years ago, and in the past five years, there's been other areas that have been highlighted, that have become older, that have been identified as things that need to be touched, like dance room floors, like the front of North, that entrance way with the sidewalk that leads to a retention ditch, and a wheelchair ramp that if you go off one edge, you're gonna end up in Main Street. So, you know, we've identified some other areas as our lenses have become more focused on things like accessibility and modernizing classrooms and those kinds of things. So, to make a long story longer, as those pools come available, then we'll come back to the board with, okay, this pool of money has become available. Would you like to hold it just in case for future contingency? Here's our priority list that we've identified. Would you like to tackle some of these? Would you like to tackle some classrooms? Or would you like to just set this aside, and if we have it at the end, we don't issue as much debt, or we issue, issue it back to the taxpayers? So those are all choices the board will have to wrestle with as we work through what happens with contingencies. Assuming some major thing doesn't happen, we have to spend that money. So, how'd I do?
That exactly addresses my question. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that you're going at, I think you said 75 to 80, as opposed to 25 or 30, you know, furnishing out spaces and realizing we had way too much contingency, and then we'd have to bring back contractors in to finish out those spaces. So I'm glad to hear you say that.
No, I'm a big believer in you shovel dirt once, okay? So once, you know, once you've moved it, you're done with it. So that's gonna be, we're gonna build a space once. Once we build it, we're done with it, that's the way it's going to be. I don't want to go back and retouch those spaces.
I think I, I mean, what you're saying is consistent with what I believe I've observed so far, the last few years, with our approach. And I think as well, you know, targeting specifically, so targeting things like where we're gonna get, yeah, it's a more pricey thing, but we're gonna really get the value out of it in the long term. For instance, like the porcelain tile on the floor. I mean, that stuff's gonna wear like tarozzo. I mean, it's quite practically a forever floor, as far as we're concerned. And so, it's gonna cost us, that might be more approaching the 100 on that end of it, right? But there are other things in terms of finishes that I'm, certainly, being an architect, I mean, there's, we could do a whole lot, we could be seeing a whole lot more.
For example, let's take your floor, for example, Mike. I would say 100 would be like a tarozzo floor.
Sure.
Right? But we're not doing a tarozzo floor. We're doing a high-end porcelain. So that might be an 85 or 90, but it's not 100.
Okay, it's a 90. But, you know, but point is, is that there's there, you know, there's there, there's those targeted things that we're looking to spend more money on, because we know it's gonna have a long-term functional value for us. And then there's other things that we could be doing. I'm not, I mean, there hasn't been a ton of scope creep here. And we've been doing a really great job, I think, of saying, here's what we promised the taxpayers. And yes, there's these additional things, but we need to keep those sitting out here separate, and it's something that maybe we're gonna get there. So if, that's how I see us spending the contingency one day, is that are there, it's not gonna be, oh, we've got this additional money, we could spend more on this finish, just because it looks, it might look a whole lot better or something. I don't see that happening. I see us more saying, the dance floor, or something like that, especially if some of those things approach a more critical need as we get closer. Certainly would be nice in the end if we could, we could return some funds to the taxpayers. And that's, you know, that's something that the future board will definitely assess as well. So, so far, I think we're right on target.
And just to be clear, it's not returning money to the taxpayers, it's not issuing the full amount of debt, correct, Mark?
Well, it depends on when it happens.
Yeah, it really depends. If we see, when we do that last issuance, if, let's say we do issue it, we could abate it always, you know. But again, I think-
We're issuing in tranches, we're not issuing all at once.
Right. Yeah, it could be that we issue less at some point. I mean, there's a whole bunch of, it depends on how it all plays out as we go forward. One of the things that we do know is that how we structured the design and build concept here, working with White, is we've already captured a bunch of efficiencies where we've met that board goal of delivering on more than what the master facility plan outlined. For example, South is an additional second floor above that fine arts wing, where they've captured two new sciences classrooms and two additional classrooms. An example at North is that whole southeast corner has been captured, including three outdoor patios that would have just been rooftop space. We said from the beginning, when we talked to the community, that square footage is at a premium at North with only a 22-acre campus. So, working, partnering with White, using that design-build concept, putting in some efficiencies, we've already met before we've even started, you know, theater classroom at South. I mean, there's a whole bunch of these things where we're ahead of the game from what we, we're delivering what we promised the community during the referendum, and ahead of that game within the same budget.
This presentation will be available to the public, I assume?
Well, the board meeting will. And then, we're, we want to hear feedback from board members, from the students. We're gonna be presenting to the staff over the next two weeks, so that we have one last chance to touch up anything, catch any spots where there might be incongruencies between one picture that was designed earlier and one that's changed over time, right? So that we get a seamless presentation here. And then the last week of June, we're planning on, or June, last week of January, January 30th, we're planning on doing a lunchtime Facebook Live presentation, and then that video being archived and sent out. What Jill and I have to talk about, based on what we've seen in the length of these, is we might want to do one for North and one for South, rather than a combined district one, because we've seen, kind of the shortest we can get a building down to is probably 45 minutes to an hour. That's a long time for somebody to sit and watch a video of one school waiting for their school to show up, right? So we might break that into two live presentations, maybe back-to-back hours, like one starting at noon, one starting at 1:00. So we're thinking on the 30th, that'll be out there. And then, and it'll be up on the website for everybody to see.
I have a question for White. How engaged are your structural MEP engineers at this point?
Fully engaged, 100%. We are working together every day. We sit down, we're actually, literally, we get up and we walk and we talk to each other, because we're all in the same office, so that makes it nice and convenient. And we have meetings regularly.
Well, it's especially encouraging, because I, you know, I haven't heard you to date really say that there's something that you've been proposing, that you've discovered, oh, wait a minute, this is gonna be a problem.
Well, we can give you an example of that. Actually, the servery at North, if you remember that image, in the top corner was the pizza kitchen, the pizza area. You're gonna have to go back a little ways.
Yeah.
But in the original conversation that we had, there was a set of double doors that opened right to the pizza serving area. So the kids could get right into, we know pizza's gonna be popular, we wanted a door right to pizza. Well, the challenge is, the wall where that pizza door would have been is actually a structural wall that they've uncovered over the last couple of weeks. So where Amy's pointing up there, that was going to be-
That door.
Like, quick access door to pizza, that now needs to be a wall to keep the building standing. So, and that was discovered through this work that they're doing with their structural engineers.
I'm talking about, and we're gonna have more of that.
Yes.
Here to you, we're gonna have more of that, right? But there, I'm talking about whole-scale sort of, this can't be here, sort of things. You know, we haven't, we haven't heard those things.
Well, and the good news is White's been in our buildings for, what, how many years now?
Ten years.
Ten years? So-
There's a familiarity.
They know a lot about our building before we even start.
That's a nice segue, too. My last comment is that White has exceeded my expectations in this so far. Very good at listening to what we're saying and being responsive to that. It's very easy, especially with creative people, to want to put your, you know, put your stamp on it. And sometimes, in our profession, that ends up trumping sometimes what the client really wants. And you've done an excellent job, I think, of bringing forward your creativity and working with our, with our staff and our community to come up with all of this. So it's just really well done. Can't say enough great things.
All of our spare time, at some point, we should put together like the versions of, like culinary arts, or the southeast corner of North, or the Commons at South, just to show how that is-
Sure.
They started very, very different than where they've ended up. But I think they've all ended up in a spot where, you know, I've talked to Adam Janus and our teams, all feel pretty comfortable with where we're at now.
Good design is a result of the architects and the designers working with, in partnership with a client. The best results always come out of that. And this is gonna be one of those wonderful examples.
In the final presentation that gets published for the public, I know in prior presentations, you had information about the total seating in the learning commons area. Did you see that on this? And I think that would be very useful information. And then also, whether we're net positive or net negative on total classrooms at both campuses, I think would be a piece of information that the public would be interested in.
No problem. We are net positive in both buildings.
Anything else?
Not only are we positive, I think that the number, the number is important, that we're positive. But we're also much more flexible in some of those spaces. Like, child development now, we can put child development in there for three or four sections a day. That classroom, when this is done, now is available for us for eight periods a day. So it's really net gain, half a classroom, jewelry, both South and North. We can put kids in there, but they have access to stuff we want them to have access to. So now you take net gain of another third or a half of a classroom. So even though it's one-for-one, you're actually gaining flexibility in the schedule, is a result of the design that's going into those spaces. So if, we should add it up that way, what the true gain is in availability, rather than just this number of rooms versus this number of rooms. Because the scheduling gets a whole lot better and a whole lot flex, more flexible as a result of these changes.
Common areas, and the breakout area in front of the, you know, by the science, that's almost immeasurable. I, you know, the amount of gain in instructional space that we're getting, and the better utilization of existing spaces is tremendous. So some of those things are just gonna be hard to measure, but they'll be felt.
Are other schools using their learning commons as revenue generators by, through community events?
Absolutely.
Oh, I would think York is especially.
At both campuses, if we did envision using those for community events, that we'd like to rent the space out, are there means of containing those events without having full access to the entire campus?
We haven't had that conversation, but of course there is. I mean, there's doors you can secure, and especially the north one, right now has already got some of that space developing, and how we've ordoned off some of that. South, not so much yet.
Fire doors.
Fire doors.
Fire doors, yeah.
And then you'd have a supervisor, so that would be a part of the event.
I know it's not our primary purpose, but just thinking about future revenue generation.
In South, really, you have the cafeteria, cafetorium, community room, and kind of the large common space right now.
Well, that's why-
So you do still end up with some zones.
Oh, I think that would be awesome.
Bring in a caterer at that demonstration kitchen, that'd be-
Yes, that's, that was one of the purposes of it, being right by the common area. Yeah. It would be a good learning experience for our students also.
You guys do weddings?
Maybe we will.
No, no booze, though. All right, do we have anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Reception of visitors, in case.
Oh, yeah. Reception of visitors. Doesn't look like we have any. You're welcome to come to the microphone if you do. We will then take a-
I move to adjourn.
A second to motion.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries.